Right, right. I was going to talk to the chairman.
I don't know if that's a point. It might be an abandoned or something.
Mayor, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pull that off and we will, uh, there's a wording. Yeah, that's not correct.
We now call this meeting a regular workshop meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. Uh, we have a copy at your places of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. Uh, Mr. Thomas, I think you were gonna make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the, uh, agenda of removing items under consent, item three on item thirteen till later date.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just a quick clarification. Uh, the item number three, in further review of the wording, uh, the wording is still confusing. So, we agreed to postpone that one until we get the wording straightened out. But I appreciate the council members bringing that to our attention.
Keeping though a little late.
We also, uh, Mr. Thomas, uh, well, anybody?
I'll get some additional information.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the change amendment to the, uh?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have some minutes on here that need to be approved also for the May 2nd, 2017 regular workshop, May 19th regular, uh, special workshop, May 16th, uh, regular workshop, and May 16th regular meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a vote, motion in second. Any other discussion?
Were you approving the consent items too?
No.
No, these are the minutes.
We, I thought we did last, or was that just agenda? I guess that was just agenda, wasn't it? Okay.
Yeah. I guess we, we should've included that in there. Did your motion include that? Because you made those amendments to the consent agenda.
I was just doing the agenda, but yeah.
Well, let's just do it with minutes and consent items.
Yeah, minutes and consent.
Okay, we'll, we'll combine the two of them. There you go. We have one motion. Did anybody second?
Yes, seconded.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? All right. So, that, uh, brings us to our first item on the non-consent items. Uh, this will be the FY 2017, 2018 budget adoption. Dr. Woodruff.
Mayor and members of council, certainly our pleasure tonight, after, uh, many, many months of working on the budget together, that we're here tonight to ask you to consider adopting the budget. As you know, when we do the budget each year, it's not just the operational budgets of the various funds, but it's also the capital improvement budget. The capital improvement plan is a five-year plan, but what you adopt is the first year of that plan, which is the spending plan. Tonight before you is the five-year CIP, the operational budgets for the general fund, water and sewer fund, stormwater fund, solid waste fund, and by state law, it must be adopted by June the 30th. As you'll recall, you have lived many days in this meeting room going through the budget in detail. This shows the general schedule. Earlier, Mike asked me, when does the city actually start their budget work? And we begin our budget work in December. You have workshops in January with your advisory committees to get input. In February, we review the draft CIP with you, capital improvement program with you. In March, the staff finalizes through the finance department, the proposed budget, and then we get into the workshops. And we appreciate the number of meetings that you have had. The revenue forecast for the coming year is shown, and as you have seen, the revenue does not go up much. Our ad valorem tax base has generally stayed the same. The one area where we had some real growth was in the sales tax. That is not because of any change in distribution formula by the county, but rather real actual increase in the revenues due to the fact that our community is fortunate to continue to be the regional shopping center for this part of the state. The operational budget is approximately $83 million. Capital projects are down from this past year and are about 12 million. Transfers about 12 million, and overall, the budget is over $100 million. But if you think of the services that you get with the police department responding to over 123,000 calls at a response time of just over three minutes, the fire department responding to over 4,000 calls with the ability to respond within 70 minutes, within seven minutes for about 90 percent of their calls, the weekly sanitation collection, the quality parks and recreation programs, all of the things that we provide, we are in fact a large business. The tax rate information, the proposed budget does not call for a change in the property tax. The property tax rate will stay at 64.2. You will remember that four cents of that goes to your capital projects. Another 5.15 cents goes to the Center for Public Safety debt. And then what's left over to operate the government from an ad valorem standpoint is 55.05 cents. It should be pointed out that of all the revenue that's generated by property tax, that revenue does not fully fund the police and fire services of the city. Bottom line, taxes and fees. This budget does not change the sales tax distribution. It does not increase the current property tax rate. Water and sewer rates are where they are currently, and later this year, or even early next year, we will be discussing water and sewer rate changes based upon potential projects. There's no change in the solid waste fees for either residential or commercial. There's no change to stormwater fees, and generally, it's $1.6 million of transfer from the general fund balance to operate the general fund. Gail Maids is also with us tonight to answer any specific questions that you may have on the budget, but at this time, the management presents this and asks you to consider it for adoption.
Right, council, I'd entertain a motion to do.
I'll move for adoption of the fiscal year budget and related schedules.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a point that, uh, compliment the staff for doing due diligence and also for the council in keeping in mind the efficiency, the economics, and the effectiveness, the three Es, as we tend to call them. Personally, I note that the, the property tax is higher than it was a couple of years ago, but we've managed, that was, that was forced upon us due to the loss of business privilege taxes and the change in the sales tax distribution formula. But we still managed to cope in terms of providing quality services, and that's why I'm pleased to make the motion to adopt this year's budget.
Any other? I hear not all those in favor of adopting the FY 2017, 18 budget along with the, uh, fee schedule and all the other?
CIP.
CIP, the CIP that was put forward here. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That brings us to our next item on the agenda for tonight, and this will be the Sturgeon City lease discussion.
Mayor and council, as we begin this tonight, there were two documents that I placed at your table, and I'd like to use those as reference as we go through. The first is the draft lease, April 13th, 2017. This is, uh, very similar to what was in your backup material, but over the last several days, we've worked with Don Herring and with the city attorney to try to clarify some of the language, and that's why you will notice that there is a red line, yellow copy. Also, the second document is the document that Sturgeon City presented relative to some of their proposed changes, and what I've done on that second document is simply highlight in yellow the, the critical wording. Before we get to those two documents, though, the state law authorizes the relationship that you're currently in and considering modifying. And I'd like to have the city attorney, if he would, talk with you about how the city has authority to convey real property. John?
Yes, sir. A lease that is for more than 10 years, which this lease is for more than 10 years, uh, has to be dealt with as the sale of real property if you were dealing with anybody other than another entity such as Sturgeon City that can use it for a public purpose. In 2009, there was a lease that was done in excess, again, of 10 years, that lease, which is in existence today, and this, that lease will be replaced by this lease once all the terms are negotiated. But basically, because of the fact, and of course y'all give money to Sturgeon City, et cetera, because they serve a public purpose and they're nonprofit, you can actually, again, by resolution, and this is what you did in 2009, the same thing, uh, by resolution, you can authorize the lease to be, to take effect at a regular meeting. And, uh, then there is a 10-day notice that goes in the paper. And after that 10 days is expired, then the lease can be signed. But there's not an upset bid or anything like that, and, uh, what we propose is if the terms can be worked out and approved by both sides here this evening, that we work toward putting this on your June 20th meeting, uh, for approval, and then do the 10-day notice, and after the 10-day notice in the paper has expired, uh, then we, the, the mayor, as, as set forth in the lease, would be authorized to sign it on behalf of the city. The 10-day notice is one of those things that the legislature's put in the law that is just a notice. That's it. So, if someone comes on day two and says, "I don't like that," there's not anything you can do about it. It's just a notice to let them know that this lease is going into effect. Again, that you're able to handle it this way only because dealing with a nonprofit that is serving a public purpose and that, again, carrying out a purpose that you, as the city could carry out if you so elected to do so. I'm glad to try to answer any other questions.
Counsel, any questions?
If we're replacing an existing lease, what are the, before its expiration, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we're two years left on the existing lease. Why, why are we having a new lease?
Well, I'll, I'll explain that. As John has said, authorization not only from the state law, but also you had a resolution that was adopted in 2009. The key points in the current lease, I think it's important to review those. It is a 15-year lease, so from 2009, you still have quite a number of years. Gail didn't let me do math in public, but you can see that we have a few years left. That lease also has an additional 15-year renewal. The purpose of that lease was for the operation of a civic and environmental education center. Why have, you know, why have the lease revisions? Here's the reality. It's to clarify and update responsibilities, to move from theory to reality, and to authorize construction and funding by the city. Let's spend a minute talking about those. In 2009, the Sturgeon City Board and the city council knew that they wanted to do something, and they created a master plan. That master plan was conceptual. It was theoretic. It said, "At some future date, these things are gonna get built based upon, you know, certain things." Today, we are facing reality in that we have a building that we're getting ready, literally the 13th, a week from today. We will send that building out for bids. In July, we will receive the bids, and in August, we'll be asking you to award the bid. So, we're moving from the theory of doing something to the reality of actually building something. As you'll recall from previous conversations, in review, in reviewing the current lease, that lease really doesn't fit everything that we're doing. For example, one of the things that it says is that technically, Sturgeon City is supposed to be mowing everything down there. Well, they don't do that. Our mowing crews do that, and we don't think, personally, I don't think it's a good idea for them to buy a 20-inch push mower and have Paula out there mowing all of the grass. Also, when you look at the, at the lease, there are components of it that talk about funding buildings. Now, you can interpret some of those words to say that the city does have the right to fund those buildings. You can interpret some of those words to say Sturgeon City has to totally fund it, and the city isn't supposed to be putting money into it. In order to clarify those things, we, as the city attorney and the city manager, we believe the best course, course of action is to have a new lease that looks at today, looks at what we know, what Sturgeon City is doing and wants to do, what you as a council are doing and want to do. So, the reason for the new lease is those, moving from theory to reality. It's not that the theory was bad, it's just the theory was the best plan at that time. The new lease has all of these sections in it, and we won't go through them in detail. We can, if you'd like. But you see, it talks about the leased premises, the use of the property, the terms, the rent, the bond, the duties of the city, duties of the leasing, development of the premises, funding, ownership, scheduling, sublease, use by the city, right of inspection, alcohol use, waiver, termination, modifications, notices. There are 19 sections in the document that is in front of you. Some of those sections are, they're all important, but some of those sections are more important than others. For example, section two says, "Operation of the Civic and Environmental Education Center." The third section talks about a 15-year term, and it currently says, based upon guidance that you have given me, it currently says that the city has the option for renewal. Well, one of the points we're gonna discuss in a minute with you is that Sturgeon City would like to have alternative language there. The rent is $1 a year. The bond payment in section five is $75,000 per year due May the 1st, and it may be increased by the city council. Based upon previous discussions that y'all have had, you have said that you would like the $75,000 to be increased under certain conditions. Well, Sturgeon City will be asking in a few minutes, no, to set that as a firm number for 15 years, and these are things we'll discuss. Section six shows the duties of the city. They are maintenance of the restrooms, pump station, boardwalks, stormwater areas, parking lots, lighting, mowing, landscaping, the asbestos removal from the lab and administrative building by July 1 of 2018, basically a year away. It also shows that the city has the right to use the fleet building and that we will pay our prorata share of the utilities. The duties of the leasing include many things, such as operating it, but they will pay the utility bills, they will provide all necessary staff for scheduling the events, setting up, breaking down, maintenance of the center. It goes on, and you can see there are probably 15 points there. It also says that, another point that's not in the current lease, is they will provide a copy of their annual budget, and they will provide an annual financial statement. And that's not an audited statement, but it's a copy of their annual financial statement. Funding, this is a section that changes from the current lease, so it's very clear that the city agrees to fund the construction, hire the architect, receive bids, supervise the construction. The ownership, the city owns the center, responsible for all major repairs. Now, major repairs are defined in here. They are such things as major roof issues, structural issues, the major air conditioning components. The utili, utilization and scheduling, that is to be conducted by Sturgeon City. They are to purchase and fund all furniture. They're responsible for the cleaning, setting up for events, general maintenance. The use by the city. City has the right for lab space in the administration building, the use of drying beds, obviously in negotiation with Sturgeon City, the use of the outside space, operation of the sewer system, stormwater system, and the fleet building. Now, here's one that I'm going to take a minute to talk with you about, and that's the use by the city as far as the new building. And you probably are not going to agree with me, but I'm gonna ask you to, to listen to, to my plea. This section does not permit the city to use the center without paying the normal fee and scheduling. I want to be right up front with you. The Sturgeon City Board doesn't agree with that. The Sturgeon City Board said, "No, the city should be able to use this building, and we as the Sturgeon City Board are willing to let you use it on a reasonable basis free." Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As your manager, here's the problem that I have with it. How many people are gonna call you, mayor, and say, "Well, I've talked to Sturgeon City, and they say the fees are $1,000 for this event. Would you please let us use it free under one of your uses?"
As long as they don't call me at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, that's fine.
Here's the other part, is, pardon the bluntness, these people have to make money. The fees are what's gonna cover the expenses down there. And if we can use it six times a year, one time a year, or unlimited times a year, every time we use it, it's money out of their pocket. And you as a council, I believe, are expecting Sturgeon City to fund this totally, to do all the operational costs, all the maintenance costs. So, every time it's given away free, let me take a sidebar. The city is a very strong supporter of many things in this community, and we do in fact, through your approval, we do in fact allow people to use the Commons Gym free for events. I'll give you an example. Just recently, the Chamber of Commerce had an expo there. We co-sponsored it. We didn't charge them. When they had the minority business, we co-sponsored it. They didn't get a charge. There are many events that at the Commons, community, nonprofits come to us and say, "We would like to do this. Would you waive the fee?" And under your authorization, we do that. I'm just saying, I'm giving you a word of caution. We're expecting the Sturgeon City Board to raise enough money to cover their expenses. This is something that, that y'all can come back and discuss in a minute. Alcohol use will be regulated by the city ordinance. I know John has this memorized.
No, I don't have it. But it's, it's allowed beer and alcohol. We did this back with Mr. Eford and when, uh, changed it so that it is allowed on, on leased property that the city leases.
Now, here are some things for us to discuss, uh, and these are not major points. I, I want to make sure that you understand that as we go through these things, this is not something that the city staff, uh, you know, is dug in over here and Sturgeon City's dug in over there. These are just general discussion points for potential changes. A question has been asked, the name of the facility. The, the current lease assumes that it will, that it will be the Sturgeon City Civic and Environmental Education Center. One of the thoughts from, uh, the board is that it simply be called the Sturgeon City Environmental Education Center. The original thought for having the word civic in there is because a lot of stuff occurs there that is civic. Don, do y'all wanna speak to this, and then we can get some direction from council?
Sure, yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, uh, council members, and, uh, Dr. Woodruff and I have opportunity to be here and be a part of this, and, uh, again, we have our members of our board here tonight there, and I want this, we've had, had the opportunity to have two meetings to review this, uh, March 15th and April 13th, and they were very, uh, Dr. Woodruff and Attorney John Carter met with us, our board there, and they were very productive meetings, uh, with that. So, the items that we bring tonight for discussion are just areas that we need clarification, that need to be at level of council. And so, again, we appreciate that, respect that opportunity to be here and all. Appreciate the consideration of this change from the Civic and Environmental Education Center to just the Environmental Education Center. Back in October 4th, uh, the mayor and pro tem invited me up to the, uh, to the table here when we were discussing and making final decisions on the vote regarding this, and asked, "Were we gonna stay true to our mission of environmental education?" And at that time, I did respond to the board, uh, which I think, and, uh, and further strengthened our resolve, is that, uh, environmental education, environmental stewardship, this conversion of this center, the story that's told down there, that the opportunities there, truly make that our environmental education center. The opportunity of, of this forthcoming building will provide many opportunities and avenues for real activities to occur down there. But the opportunity of this lease here tonight, uh, three things that I feel that the lease does at, at our point now is that through this efforts of our combined activities, is that it instills, uh, trust, it instills responsibility, and instills accountability to the board of Sturgeon City in operation of that, that we do, that we operate this, and that our, our sole function is to operate and schedule priority around environmental education, and then other opportunities that have a proper fit or proper schedule can be held there too. So, again, uh, that's, that's just in keeping with our original foray into what we worked with. Um, there's, we've had, we have been through some architects and some planning, some items and all, and, um, and yes, initially, we had civic in there, but our, our true intent is that this be an environmental education center. And I would welcome, again, any other board member. I don't want to overtake anything, but that's our initial, our initial, um, response.
Counsel, what guidance can you give us?
I personally, I, I think it's fine with as far as the name change. I mean, I think that works just fine, in my opinion.
I'm fine with that.
You might wanna change the wording in here.
Oh, yes. Remember, you're not adopting anything tonight, but, so, I think I'm reading around the table that you're comfortable changing. Yes, sir?
I'm not. Um, as a branding matter, when you take out civic, it almost implies exclusively that it's the education center. It's not unusual for us to get the question, "Does Jacksonville have a civic center?" We understand what the priority is, and we pretty much, um, in our documents and everything, we have, um, established what the priority is for the, for the use of the building. But I just think as a branding matter, um, it, it, the name itself would let the public know that there's also a possible public use for that building. And so, I think that having civic in the name is, um, is not only appropriate, but it's helpful to the branding. Um, so, that's my. Dr. Woodruff and Attorney John Carter met with us, our board there, and they were very productive meetings with that. So, the items that we bring tonight for discussion are just areas that we need clarification, that need to be at the level of council. And so, again, we appreciate that, respect that opportunity to be here and all. Appreciate the consideration of this change from the Civic and Environmental Education Center to just the Environmental Education Center. Back in October 4th, the mayor and pro tem invited me up to the table here when we were discussing and making final decisions on the vote regarding this, and asked, were we going to stay true to our mission of environmental education? And at that time, I did respond to the board, which I think, and further strengthened our resolve, is that environmental education, environmental stewardship, this conversion of this center, the story that's told down there, the opportunities there, truly make that our environmental education center. The opportunity of this forthcoming building will provide many opportunities and avenues for activities to occur down there. But the opportunity of this lease here tonight, three things that I feel that the lease does at our point now is that, through the efforts of our combined activities, is that it instills trust, it instills responsibility, and instills accountability to the board of Sturgeon City in operation of that, that we operate this. And that our sole function is to operate and schedule priority around environmental education, and then other opportunities that have a proper fit or proper schedule can be held there, too. So, again, that's just in keeping with our original foray into what we worked with. We have been through some architects and some planning, some items and all, and, yes, initially, we had civic in there, but our true intent is that this be an environmental education center. And I would welcome, again, any other board member, I don't want to overtake anything, but that's our initial response.
Counsel, what guidance can you give us?
I personally, I think it's fine with as far as the name change. I mean, I think that works just fine, in my opinion.
I'm fine with that.
You might want to change the wording in here.
Oh, yes. Remember, you're not adopting anything tonight, but... So, I think I'm reading around the table that you're comfortable changing. Yes, sir?
I'm not. As a branding matter, when you take out civic, it almost implies exclusively that it's the education center. It's not unusual for us to get the question, does Jacksonville have a civic center? We understand what the priority is, and we pretty much, in our documents and everything, we have established what the priority is for the use of the building. But I just think as a branding matter, the name itself would let the public know that there's also a possible public use for that building. And so, I think that having civic in the name is not only appropriate, but is helpful to the branding. So, that's my opinion.
All right, we have one short of being unanimous, John.
It's up to the council if you want each of these to take a vote, since we do need direction to get this finalized for the 20th mayor.
Well, let's do this separate. I would recommend, or entertain a motion to change the name of the center.
I'll make a motion just to get it out on the table that we change the name to Sturgeon City Environmental Education Center.
Second.
Okay. Other discussion. Where will this be? Is it going to be, like, on the building, or is it going to be just as in general?
Well, it will be, number one, in the lease.
Okay.
Number two, it will be the name on the building. Number three, it will be on all the promotional literature, I would assume, because if you're going to have an event at the mayor's house, well, I guess you could say at Sammy's abode, you know, you need to have a formal title. So, I would see this being, whichever name you pick, this is going to be on documents, legal documents, promotional documents, and on the building.
I mean, it's not like you're taking Jacksonville out of the title because it's not their start with.
I would just...
They're the nonprofit, that's...
No, it's their request.
That's what they want.
Yeah, but I guess it goes back to some of my opposition earlier to the thing, is I wasn't real crazy about the civic center side of it, as y'all are aware. And I felt like that perhaps, not perhaps, we had made a promise to Sturgeon City folks, the board here, to fund an educational center, and I was more than willing to support that. I've never felt comfortable with the civic side, so I do favor the change to environmental education, so...
Other discussion?
Well, it's not going to do... It's not going to do anything with the kind of functions they can hold there, is it?
No.
Okay. Any others? Okay, all those in favor of the name change indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The second thing, I would like to use the lease document. As John and I have talked with Don over the last couple of days, if you look at the bottom of the first page of the lease, number two, section two, the current lease and the draft lease refer to master plans. The problem with that is that we actually have a whole series of master plans, plus we have work by Attorney Sawyer. So, to simplify this, what we are proposing is to leave in everything that's highlighted in yellow, and to take out everything that's in red and struck through. Now, there's no new wording in that paragraph at all. But what we're proposing, and I think this is mutual...
Yes, sir.
Is the lease shall use, the Leasee shall use the premises for the operation, and of course, you have to now strike the word civic, the operation of an environmental education center and associated uses, designed to create economic development activities, promote environmental and community stewardship, provide environmental and civic education activities, and provide facilities for other civic activities, including public meeting space, space for public receptions and weddings, space for social gatherings, and any similar use which is deemed compatible with the operation of the facility by the city and the Leasee. At all times, the premises shall be used on a non-discriminatory basis without regard to sex, race, creed, religion, handicap status, or national origin. What it takes out are the references to the master plans. And the reason why is, number one, who knows whether those master plans will ever be built, or, or, or? What it does, though, is gives you a framework that says, here's how the building's to be used. And I think both the Sturgeon City Board and John and I would recommend this change. We'd be happy to have some discussion and guidance, please.
You got any similar use which is deemed compatible? That kind of leaves it...
Wide open.
A wide open.
Everybody comfortable?
Is that the intent, is to leave it wide open?
Yes, sir. You know, but as you notice, it does say, it has to be which is deemed compatible with the operation of the facility by the city and the Leasee. So, let's just say for discussion purposes that, you know, Charles Eifert comes back from Michigan on his vacation, and he gets an idea that we need to have horseback racing inside the facility.
Bye-bye.
You know, the city can say, yep, it's a great idea. Or because it's not listed, the city can say, nah, 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 we're not going to go there. So, while it gives a lot of flexibility, it doesn't give them a blank check.
That's what I was getting at, you know, having the horse races inside. Because, I mean, we've been faced with the same thing here at City Hall with use of the council chambers, youth center and all that, you know, so we would have the same scenario there.
Comfortable or not?
I'm okay with all that, William.
Consensus here?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Section three is the term. If you'll notice on page, I'm sorry, if you notice on page two, the term is currently written, says, "The term of this lease shall be for a 15-year period commencing," and of course, it will commence on the day that you adopt this, if you adopt this, you know, proposed two weeks.
Is it 15 or 1/5? There's a space there, makes me read it differently.
Well, Gail not only doesn't let me do math in public, she doesn't let me type in public either, so... But it's intended to be a 15-year period. The bottom of that paragraph says, "The lease may be renewed beyond the 15-year period by the city upon its sole discretion." If you would, please, go now to the letter from Sturgeon City. On page two, look at the highlighted words. "The Sturgeon City Board respectfully requests consideration for inclusion of revised language which provides for renewable options beyond the 15-year period, and revisions in annual lease payments paid." The following suggested wording, "At the end of the initial 15-year term, Sturgeon City has the right to renew the lease for [blank] a year," you would fill in the blank, "for another 15 years. In order for the lease to be renewed, Sturgeon City has to be in compliance with the terms of this lease, or any mutually agreed-upon addendums." Dr. Herring?
Well, again, we appreciate the opportunity to review this language, and, again, while we respect the sole discretion of the city, that we would hope that there'd be some amenable language there that would allow, offer the right to renew. And, you know, we're, the annual financial disclosures and those items that we'll be bringing forth here, and those things should either be building up for the fact that we earned the right to renew that, or we don't, we just felt that there should be a little more amenable language in that area there.
Well, it's maybe a little different than that, Don. The way I read your proposal, you have the right, that means that the council could not deny it, as long as you're in compliance. I'm not opposed to that. The reason why I, as the author of the original draft, which you're looking at, the bonds for the building are 20 years. We're through year five, so we have 15 years left. Certainly, the city is putting in substantial money. The TDA is putting in substantial money, and Sturgeon City Board. So, in drafting it, I saw this as, for the next 15 years, in exchange for roughly the $1 million that they're funding, it's their building. At the end of that, some future city council, and obviously definitely a future city manager, maybe not a new future city attorney, you know, they could say, okay, you've used it for 15 years, you've gotten your money's worth out of it, it's now a city building. And that may not be your intent, and I'm not digging a hard line here one way or the other. One is, it says, "Future councils will decide after 15 years." The proposed language is a right. I'm not opposed to either. I'm just explaining to you my thinking, and we would ask you to give us direction.
I guess I'll be fine with it, once I know what's in the blank. You know, that's...
That's the challenge.
You're not really telling me anything. You're saying renew it for, keep paying 75,000?
No, no, they're actually, I think it's for...
No, no, this is what we're talking about.
Well, I know, but I'm just wondering...
No, it says renewed the lease for...
Okay, okay, okay.
A determined amount.
Right, as opposed to rent, okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to see if we could do something where it's negotiable at the end of 15 years. You know, they come before the board and talk about, just like we're sitting down right now, they come before the city council and say, hey, do you think we've done a good job? And that current city council says yea or nay, and they talk about, what can we, what would be a fair amount to renew for, if we feel like they've done a good job? So, you know, I think, I'm uncomfortable with them having the right to renew it and us setting a fee right now. I mean, I don't know what's going to happen 15 years from now. So, I'd rather leave it more open-ended, where they certainly have got to earn the right, or they have to earn the approval to get it renewed, and whatever is fair at that point, I think will be a little more clearer than it is right now.
So, you're arguing with what's existing?
Yeah, I tend to be a little more, I tend to be a little more towards what the manager has, I think, in this particular issue.
I think that's not unreasonable. I mean, it's...
The thing that I'd like to add, just one thing about that, we still have to meet at the end of the 15 years, we still have to be fulfilling the mission. So, I mean, if you stop and look at Sturgeon City's position, you know, we have finally got to pay off the 1.5 million, I believe is the number, not a million, but 1.5 million. You know, we have just hit that milestone, but we have to be in compliance with the mission statement. And that mission statement is Environmental Education Center. So, I mean, we would like to have a little comfort as well in the fact that, you know, we're not doing this, all this for just a 15-year period. We're doing this for a longer period of time, and we'd like to have some comfort, as long as we fulfill the mission statement of being an environmental center.
I might not be seeing this just right, but it seems to me, at the end of 15 years, when you'd be negotiating this deal here, that the bond would be paid off. There would be, no longer be that expenditure. The only expenditure would be left is the maintenance of the building and the upkeep and that. So, you're looking at a whole, I mean, why would we pin you down to the $75,000? I mean, that's just my way of thinking, because it's not going to cost that much. I would think it'd be a little bit fairer to have, like, a prorata share, you know, spread out, you know, between the contributing agencies? Is that too far off base?
Well, I think the real, Mayor, I don't think that you're off-base. I think that the point is that the words as proposed give them the right for an extension. That's a guarantee on their part. And if that's what y'all would like, that works, we'll change the wording. You could put in there that it will be mutually negotiated, but what we know is this, this council cannot bind a future council beyond a certain contractual arrangement. I mean, the words that you put in here will either bind or give flexibility to a future council. If you sign this lease and it says that they have the right for a 15-year extension, I believe that the attorney would tell you what.
If you put in the amount and agree on that tonight and accept the wording by Sturgeon City, you're bound for 30 years.
That's...
Because, now, again, going back to your language, maybe help, and it's hard to negotiate these things in a public forum, but we will tonight, that to take the language and say, the lease may be renewed beyond the 15-year period by the city upon mutually agreed-upon terms and rental amount, or something like that between the two. Because no one knows at this point in time, there may be terms that you never even thought about in this lease, and I wish we'd included that. And again, only until you get into it and see it, that you know those things need to be there. But something like that, to give some, a little more than this at the city, may give you a little bit of comfort.
I could not imagine, I couldn't imagine them not doing a good job, and I don't think, I'm not trying to reflect and say, hey, we're worried about the performance of the board for after 15 years. I don't think that's the issue. I just, I think it's more the uncertainty, as you put it, John, we don't know the future, and I don't know what's going to happen 15 years from now, and I would feel uncomfortable trying to make a 30-year agreement, sitting here right tonight.
I mean, looking at the duties of the city, I mean, we have a lot of duties down there. It's not just mowing the grass, it's maintaining the boardwalks, it's maintaining the insurance on the building, it's the general maintenance of the facilities, guidance, you know, maintaining the grounds, I mean, it's not like you're taking on the whole job yourself. I mean, you know, and I just don't, I'm just not comfortable.
My thing is, what I was trying to relate before is, we don't know what that number's going to be, and like I say, when this gets renegotiated, there's going to be a lot of things off the table, maybe some things added to it. So, to put down a hard, fast number here, I think that's impossible to do. I mean, and like you say, why would we obligate a future council to stick to that number? Let them renegotiate it at that time when the lease comes up for renegotiation.
In 30 years, we're going to have to replace every one of the air conditioner or heat pumps, we're going to have to replace the roof at some point, within that 30 years.
Well, I remind you, we put that on a slope, so hopefully we don't have to replace the roof.
That sun will...
Read your proposal language again, John. I don't see any problems with that.
Number three, term, strike the word, by the city upon, strike the word, "its sole discretion," and add, "upon mutually agreed-upon terms and rental amount, may be renewed." And that didn't give anybody a sure thing either way, either party. I mean, Sturgeon City may say, we've had all we can do, we've done the best we could, and look, we need to turn it back over to the city. Or the city may say, we love it, let's keep it going, let's put another dollar there and keep it going.
I'm happy with that.
Can we have a motion then on that word?
I'll make that motion to accept the language proposed by the city attorney.
About a second. Anybody?
I'd like to hear, I know y'all were doing, before we vote, kind of since we're doing a public forum thing, y'all were talking about among yourselves, how do you feel about this proposed change, in the interest of negotiating?
I think it's more amenable language than what we had a few minutes ago, sole discretion. Gives us a chance to all evolve to a future, and see how the operational revenue, maintenance expenses, terms and all, gives that chance to evolve. It doesn't, anyway, bind, it gives us that chance to go and grow together.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that.
Does this not do it for you?
Yes, yes. I mean, again, I would not keep my board members from speaking either, but I...
All right. We have a second? We do have a second?
I didn't hear a second.
Anybody?
We not have a second?
We do not have a second.
Then I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing not on?
I'm sorry.
The language says the last sentence of number three, "The lease may be renewed upon the 15-year, beyond the 15-year period by the city upon mutually agreed-upon terms and rental amount."
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next point of discussion is section five, the bond payment. The highlighted part says, well, reading a little before that, "The Leasee agrees to make payments to the city to offset bond issues." Okay. "In the amount of 75,000 per year for the first five years of the lease, thereafter, the city may negotiate annually with the Leasee a higher annual lease rate..." the city may negotiate annually with the leasing a higher annual lease rate designed to fully cover debt payment incurred by the city for the construction of the Environmental Education Center." The Sturgeon City Board is requesting what is in the yellow, down at the very bottom of that second page. Respectfully request, the following suggested wording, "Is agreed that the leasing has obligated itself for payment of $75,000 per year for 20 years to support funding designated for the construction of the Environmental Education Center. As of June 6, 2017, five of the 20 payments have been made. The leasing agrees to contrib- to continue with the payment of 75,000 per year for the remaining 15 years. Failure of the leasing to make these payments is considered a term of default. At any time the city, at any time the city has declared a default on the lease by the leasing for non-payment of the annual $75,000 amount, or for any other reason, the requirement of the leasing to make additional $75,000 payments is no longer required." Let me tell you where the language that's in, in what I call the staff draft came from. If you go back and look in the minutes, when we set the $75,000 number initially, several council members, who are generally seated very close to me tonight, made the comment that they wanted it clear that if Sturgeon City began to really make money, which we all hope they will, that they would take on more and more and more of the debt obligation.
And I remember an offer to that effect in the discussion.
Yeah, and, and that's why the wording that I have in there is reflective of what the minutes and what your conversation was. Now, that doesn't mean you can't change it. You can say, "Well, after further thought, we will accept Sturgeon City's wording." That's up to y'all. Y'all are the ones who make the rules, we're the ones who implement it. But I want it understood, you know, I'm not being hard-nosed here, almost said something else, you know, I'm not being hard-nosed here. That word reflect what you as a council said earlier. If you want to change it, I'm fine with that. That is a policy decision by you, not a decision by management. Now, Don, please talk about why you're requesting the change.
The outcome of our, our dialogue, or what we've set down the road is, is looking at our current payment schedule, and, again, what's been locked in as far as years, or what's been defined here as debt, hopefully some clarifiers for that, also some, some consideration of, of what's been written there at that point. And I would ask any of our current board members who have, who, you know, have questions and or concerns about that, if they want to add anything at this time.
I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and address it as well. The, the direction that Sturgeon City has been under from the very get-go was the 20 years payments of $75,000 a year. I don't believe anybody in, at this table would sign a lease saying, "I'm going to lease the property, but at the fi- and, and in the five years, increase the rent to whatever you want to increase it to." That just seems to be a little bit ambiguous to us. The, the discussion has been $75,000 for 20 years, and you're, 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 when, when we came back, when we were talking about the overruns and the building costing more than we had anticipated, there was some discussion that, that we would step up and as funds were available, help to contribute with that, but on this original amount, the discussion all along has been $75,000 for 20 years, and what we're proposing is, let's just stick with the original wording. We have gone back and looked at the council minutes to try to find the discussion. I can't find it now, I, I, sometimes I just overlook things, but I have, I haven't seen anything that shows that the agreement for Sturgeon City was 75,000 for five years, but then it can be increased to, to, to a different figure. So, with that being said, I'll...
Not being argumentative, you know, you may not find it in the minutes, I can find it in my ears. Now, you're the two gentlemen who made that comment, if you want to change that, that's fine with me.
Sam?
Hold on just a minute. Is Mr. Efe going to speak on your behalf?
If that's lawful, sir.
Why don't you come up and sit there a few moments?
I think that y'all, you need to realize that, that, you know, this is just phase three, that we're with the building. There's two other phases for Sturgeon City, and we just don't feel like that after a five-year period, that y'all can raise the, you know, the, you know, the prices on us of when we, you know, we have negotiated, and all of our budgets and stuff, the $75,000 per year are there, therefore, because it, we do have it, I think that we do have it in here where, because, where we can pay in advance.
No, that's not in here. That's not in here.
Start with the, Paul.
I specifically asked the, I specifically asked your chairman, Don, did he want a prepayment? Because when we negotiated this with you several mi- several months ago, I told you that I was not in favor of prepayment, and the reason why I'm not in favor of prepayment is this, it gets you out from under interest payments, but it doesn't get the city out. The city is obligated for 20 years. Now, if you want to prepay, because what y'all were saying was, "We pledged a million dollars." Well, you didn't pledge a million dollars. What you pledged was at least $75,000 for 20 years. That's a million and a half dollars. So, when I asked Don yesterday, "Is prepayment still on the table?", I believe you told me, "No, prepayment was off." If you want to put it on the table, that's fine. The bottom line, though, comes down to this, council needs to decide, what do you want their annual payments to be? If you want it to be $75,000 for the next 15 years, you need to say so. If you want to give them the right to prepay, you need to say so.
Can I say another thing? The reason that I'm so, I guess adamant about prepaying is, we're going to be going after some large monies, the Golden Leaf, some other foundations. They're not going to let us go and give us $75,000 a year. They might write us a check for $350,000, but they're not going to let us keep that in the bank, so we can write the city a $75,000 check. Now, I think that we should be able to work something out, I mean, I, I, as far as, because I'm chairman of raising this money, and I, I, I just think that we have big ideas about the money, and we, and I think we do need to have some, I'm asking that y'all come up with some plan for us to be able to prepay. If we got to pay a little additional interest, that's fine, if anybody's got enough sense to figure it out, but if we get a grant for 250 or 350,000, that money needs to go toward, toward our obligation of that building. And I don't think that's asking too much on a, from a businessman's standpoint.
Do we have prepayment privileges on our loan?
No, sir.
However, think about it this way, let, let's, let's say they do give us $300,000. From a business standpoint, I'd rather have money today than I would later on. And, and if he wants to pay me $300,000, and I have to pay 75,000 out for the next few years until that goes, I'd rather have that money sitting in my savings account, drawing some interest, and then I know, that way I know I have money to, to meet at least the next little bit. I mean, we don't have any guarantee, per se, that they're going to be able to pay us $75,000 a year for the next 15 years, anyway. We're hoping they will.
I agree with you.
So, I, and I'm okay with, I'm okay with prepaying.
I don't know that we're talking about the same thing, though, because if you're talking about, "I'm going to give you my payment for next year," or are you going to say, "I want to discount, I want to pay you..."
No, 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 no. I don't want, I don't want to discount.
We're talking about paying, pay, right now, we have 15 more years at 700, at $75,000 a year. I'm not very good at math, but I, you know, let, let's say that it's a million dollars, you know, you know. Well, my goal as chairman of this committee is to get that million dollar raised and get it in your hands just as quick as we can.
A million dollars, like you said, it's not a million, it's 1.5 million.
Well, whatever it is, whatever it is.
I mean, I think we would be silly not to accept a prepayment of a future, I mean, that's totally the opposite of what I'm thinking about. If you're going to pay, if I'm going to pay ahead, I want a discount, because you're getting my money today. And there is, there used to be a thing called the time value money, it's been pretty much negated by the Federal Reserve. But I, I think we can accept, and as far as the lease changing the 75,000, I mean, let's get it out on the table. Do we not pay to, to perform the Sturgeon City institutes? Do we not, the city come up and pay you the money to put on those institutes every year?
Yes, we do.
Do we not give $95,000 a year to the Sturgeon City nonprofit?
Not sure of the exact number, but we do give money.
$95,000 a year. We can change that anytime. We could change it the day the building opens. It's a gift. There's no obligation on our part, just because it's been done. In fact, I think we need to insist that that number decrease, when, once that building is functioning. That's our, we can change the equation without this lease via those two things.
You can certainly change any other contributions, you know, the, again, I think that, I think there are two questions here that you need to address. Number one is, do you want to fix the $75,000 as the set amount for the next 15 years? That's question one. Question two is, do you want us to add a prepayment clause? And if you do want a prepayment clause, you need to give us direction as to what that actually means, because in our discussions with Sturgeon City, they have said they have pledged $1 million. And what I've said is, "No, you haven't pledged a million dollars, you have pledged one-fourth of the bond debt." And one-fourth of the bond debt can be looked at as $1 million, or it can be looked as the total interest and principal that you will pay for 20 years, and one-fourth of that, which is not $1 million. And we can get you an actual schedule that says that that $4 million, here's how much interest you're going to pay, you, meaning us collectively, because obviously, even though you can't get any interest at a bank today, we're certainly paying, what, 3.6% interest or some number on these bonds?
It was 3.7, I don't remember the exact number.
So, again, we're, we're just looking for direction tonight, so I'd ask you, on question one, what do you want to do with the fixed amount for 15 years?
I'll, I'll throw a motion out there. I'm, I'm comfortable with 15 years at $75,000, and I make that motion, and we can address...
Do you accept their language, Mr. Warden, or do you want...
I, I'm, I look, I'm, I'm okay with their language, because they've agreed to pay $75,000 per year for the, for the next 15 years, or the 15 years of the lease. And whatever that amount turns out to be, which is a little over a million, if they, they so prepaid, then they're obligated for that.
Let, let's not talk about prepayment for a moment.
I'm going to make a motion, $15,000 a year, or $75,000 a year for 15 years, yes.
Do we have a second?
Accepting their language.
Yes, I'm, I'm okay with their language.
Okay, any discussion on this matter? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye to the $75,000 for 15 years. Okay. All opposed? Okay.
On, on the prepayment, I would suggest that you do it, as any mortgage, as my mortgage, I want to go and make a prepayment, it's not going to stop me from having to make the next payment on the, the, every monthly payment, it's going to take it off at the end. That, and John, being in that business, would know that any prepayment, would it be taking it off in year 15 and bringing it forward? Get what I'm trying to say?
As far as I'm concerned, they, they, they owe us, the city, 15, 15 years, some $75,000. If they want to pay it $75,000, that crack for 15 years, great. If they want to pay it all in, in 10 years...
But what he's saying is, if they pay 150, do they get to skip next year?
We're, 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 we're asking for 15 years, some $75,000. Is that... I, I know, I know, the thing about a mortgage, I understand where you're coming from, but we're not, there's no real interest, you know, we're not doing that with them, this is...
We will need direction, if you go with a prepayment allowance, we'll need direction as how to apply that prepayment. Do we, if they pay 150,000, does that take care of this year and next year, or does that take care of your 14 and 15? That's what the direction I'm trying to get, doesn't matter which way you want to go, but we need direction if you go with a prepayment penalty, or, excuse me, a prepayment authorization.
I'm, I'm fine on the front end, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the back end. If, if we were doing a, a mortgage with them, yes, I'd say that would come off the back like you would any other mortgage, but this is different, this is a, this is a lease payment. And so, I would say that if they give us, let's say, 150,000, that takes care of the first two years, they owe us that third year, on, on the date of the, May 1st.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I believe that completes the items that we had relative to the letter. That doesn't mean that we are not open to further discussion. You will notice in item six, as Mr. Thomas has said, the duties of the city are enumerated, they are many. You will notice that the duties of the leasing are spelled out in seven, and they are many. I think the one point that I would go back and ask direction on again is the question regarding the Section 13. If you look at Section 13, "Used by the city other than the Civic and Environmental Education Center." It says, "We use the lab space, mutually agreed number of spaces in the drying beds, the use of outside facilities to conduct city-sponsored events, plumbing and pumps, continued operation of the various pumps related to the sewer system, and the use of the fleet building." You'll notice it is void on the issue of using the Environmental Education Building. Now, I gave you my discussion before on this point. I'm not opposed to you saying, "Thanks for the advice, but we're not going to take it," because we are, the city is funding a lot of that building, but I would ask for your thoughts on what do you want to do? Do you want us to amend Section 13, so it does specifically say the city can use it, and how many times a year we can use it? Or do you want to leave it where we don't use it unless we rent it?
I tend to agree with you, that, you know, you want a farm-linked relationship, you know, if we can use it free, and we go in there and use it five or six times a year for four or five years, and then all of a sudden they hit on hard times, then they can come back to us and say, "Well, we're down, we've been giving it to you, you know, we didn't charge you." Maybe if we had, you know, again, you're, you're... I think, I think clarity is very important, that you understand what I expect of you and what you expect of me, to, to put something like that that's ambiguous, undefined. I kind of like the idea, if the city's going to use a facility, we pay it as a going rate. Yeah, I mean, if, you know, we're, we've, we've made our contribution by, via all the work we've done, I mean, why ask for more?
Is that a motion?
So move.
I'll second that.
What about?
We got to vote here.
Just ask whether I, I or...
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Who asked one question, in terms of, I know it's a modification, it's amendment, who's the arbiter of disputes over the language? City attorney always is.
A horn of law would ultimately be.
Is that where we'd have to end up?
Yes, sir, it's not an arbitration or anything, if it came down to that, it's worth, you know, a legal lease, like you, you're supposed all the time going to small claims court to get their lease done.
Well...
But, yes, sir.
I hope, and I'm sure it would never come to that.
Two, two last comments. I, I do want to commend the Sturgeon City Board for the offer to have the city use the building free, but I can, I, I've... But I can, I, I've already stated the reason why as the manager. That's just not a headache you want to bite off. So, the other thing that I, I do want to state is that I'm excited about the fact that whether we all agree with all the wording in here or not, the lease needed to be updated. We will move forward to have this on the June-
I want to address that.
Please.
Two things. Number one, we will add language here for everybody that cancels the 2009 lease. We've got to have something to at least cancel, maybe a separate document or whatever. But as I sit here and upon further reflection, I'm not so sure that the board, the council needs to approve this until you get your bids back and get a contract on this building. What if this, these bids come back in a lot higher or whatever? So I'm thinking that, again, my recommendation would be to, to wait until at least you get the bids back in and see what, what you come out with there before you firm this up. Right now, everyone's saying we can work within the budget. Well, you never know, do you, Mr. Warden, until you get the bids in, whether you can work within the budget? So that would be my recommendation. We don't, because I don't think it's a hair-on-fire type deal that has to be done on the 20th, but rather for us to take our time and make sure that the bids do equal the budget or less. Is that?
I certainly have no objections to that. I would only say that I believe that before you can award those bids, that you must adopt the lease.
That'll be fine. We'll work together.
Because it changes and authorizes the city to fund the building. And we can do that. Currently, that will be your first meeting in March, in, in August.
August.
First meeting in August.
Have your bids back in.
So, but again, currently Tuesday of this coming week, we will have the bids out for the various construction companies to be bidding on. We will have them in in July, and then we will be awarding them or recommending you award them at your first meeting in August.
Approve the lease first, then we'll award the bid.
Counsel, is there any other comments about this? John?
I, I just want to say this sort of off the, off the path a little bit. But I, you know, I'm a fisherman. I love to fish the new river. And I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of fishermen out there that has noticed what the city has done. City and the base has done in regards to the new river and environmental education and that sort of thing. I don't believe we could do justice in publishing it in every newspaper in this country what, what this city has done to participate in the cleanup of that river. It is a wonderful place to fish. People know what the city has done and the base has done. And I want the, I know we've had some issues with, with working through the lease, but I want to thank the city because I enjoy the river. And I just want to thank the city for their part in what they've done to, to, to change nature and to correct what, what was done in years past. And I want to thank all of y'all for y'all's participation as well on that.
Thank you for your comments. Counsel, any other discussion while we got this? Go ahead.
No, no sense.
Okay. While we still have our Sturgeon City Board people at the table, anybody, any of you want to make an additional comment or concern?
Well, Mr. Mary, again, on behalf of our board and all, we'd like to thank the opportunity to come tonight and have, have this dialogue here. Again, I'd like to thank Dr. Woodruff and Attorney John there for helping us and, and helping create and propose language and revise language and the effort they've had to help us strengthen this lease here. Because when the bids are awarded and the things we, the united front going forward to our public, our taxpayers and all, and being responsible and, and holding up our end of the deal or our obligations and all, this lease will be critical that as we go forward. And so we appreciate our opportunity to get this crafted tonight.
Thank you for your efforts and Richard, your staff, and the efforts that y'all made to try to come together and get this agreement drafted.
Glad to do it. We have, we have one other item. If you'd like to take a break and then we'll come back and handle that, or otherwise we can handle that one item.
Let's take a break.
Okay, now we're back in session. Mayor and Counsel, we have one other item that we'd like to review with you this evening. We're still negotiating the Holiday City pool lease. What we'd like to do is review the draft with you. Tomorrow, we'll actually meet with the folks who own Holiday City to try to finalize it. But in order to make sure we're on the same page, I wanted to simply to review some of the key components. You have the, the lease in your packet. It's obviously to create a public-private partnership for the swimming pool at the mobile home park. You've seen pictures of the facility. We have looked at it in more detail, and believe me, it is a first-class facility. The terms are for really a 10-week period. September 30th, I'm sorry, June the 30th through September the 5th. We will operate it Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It will close at 4:00 p.m. It will reopen at 5:00 p.m. for use by Holiday City only, and it will be available for them, for the residents of Holiday City only for Sunday. So, again, the public use would be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The rent is $1 a year. We are, we will provide two lifeguards, one pool attendant, and we'll reimburse them for the chemicals and for the pool technician. And we will provide insurance. That way, the pool belongs to them. The people who've been maintaining and running the equipment will continue to do that. Holiday City will provide a certified pool operator. That's required by our insurance and also by the State Health Department. They will do the daily maintenance. They will do all of the expenses. They'll clean the restrooms. They'll do all the pool area. They will have insurance. We will have insurance. As far as the operational, there'll be public admission by fee. Holiday City residents by pass card. Now, why is that? The lease agreements that the folks have signed when they have rented either a space and/or a space and a mobile home in Holiday City clearly state that they have the right to use the pool. So, the city does, cannot put the assentia who owns Holiday City in a position that would be negative to their lease. So, they brought this to our attention, and we said, fine, since this is an experiment, it really isn't about generating money. It's about determining how many people use it. So, the residents of Holiday City will have a pass card issued by Holiday City. Anyone from the public who wants to use the facility will simply come in and they will pay a fee. Parking is going to be at Northeast Creek Park. It's less than 1,000 feet. In this age of wellness, we should encourage people to come and, and walk that distance. There's very limited parking during the day. There are some parking spaces, about 15, right at the pool. That'll be on a first-come, first-served basis. From a security standpoint, we are saying that we will just provide JPD, the general patrol of the neighborhood. We're, they're not asking for a security officer there. Every hour, we're open. But we have agreed that JPD will be visible on their normal routine, their normal routes. And again, we talked about the fact, public use will close at 4:00 p.m. daily and will be closed all day Sunday. From a fee standpoint, this is not in your fee schedule. I'm not overly worried about that. I hope you aren't. But what we would propose is that children under 12 be $1, that adults and children 12 and above would be $2. Holiday City would be, obviously, by pass card. That's pretty much the overview of the lease. I know that you've had this to look at, and if you have any concerns, again, it is only a 10-week lease. There is insurance that we have already determined through the league. The league insurance for this summer would be $600. So, it's not an onerous call at all. I would mention, before we open up to general discussion, last week in a meeting with the, with the North Carolina League of Municipalities Risk Management team, they have identified a new device that's a safety collar. And what it does is, it literally is a ring that you wear around your neck. It's very colorful. It has lights. And you can preset that ring so that if a child is underwater more than 30 seconds, or at a depth greater than you set, let's say for discussion purposes, because that pool goes from three feet down to nine feet, that if certain children go below the four-foot mark, it will automatically set off an alarm at the lifeguard stand, and it will automatically turn the neck ring into red pulses. The purpose, obviously, is to say someone may be drowning, and the lifeguard. You can get 60 of those rings and all of the various subvertices for $10,000. We're working with the league to see if they would consider a grant, since this is a test project, and we will give you more information on that. I would say to you, if we're going to get into the pool business, the number one thing you should always be concerned about is safety of the swimmers, especially the young people. So, we will provide you more information on that, but I think the league's risk management staff should be commended for identifying this new technology and offering us the opportunity to potentially receive a grant on that. How do you feel about the general terms and the fee?
What is the, what was the capacity?
75 persons, I'm sorry. And our gate attendant will be responsible, and, and that will be 75 people. If, if a mother comes in a bathing suit, she's a person. If a mother comes in blue jeans, she's a person. So, it's 75 people in the gate.
Not necessarily in the pool, but in the gate.
In the gate.
I think it's a great idea to try it.
I do, too. I'm, I'm glad that this, the city is, I mean, I'm, I'm always impressed with the quality of staff, the, the foresightedness of the staff, and, and to think outside the box and, and recognize there's an opportunity here. And I'm, I'm, I think the staff should be commended, from, from you all the way down to whoever, whoever come up with the idea, which may have been you, by the way.
Well, actually, it was the city attorney and Susan Baptist and a group of us.
Yeah, I figured it might have come from John.
Well, you know, John has a grandchild now that needs to be able to swim.
But I'm, but I'm being serious. They really, I'm, I'm, I'm never, I'm always, not, not amazed, but I'm always pleased when I, when I see how good a quality of staff we have and how they're always thinking ahead. Just.
We appreciate that. We'll pass that on. Any other thoughts on this? Your next meeting is on June the 20th, two weeks from tonight, and then we will be taking a break through the month of July. Counsel, I believe I've said everything that we had for you this evening.
Members of counsel, is there any further comments? Okay. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I know.
All in favor?